Okay, because she caught proponents and agents in the agreements. Also, she should be assigned these. So say he assigns a contract. Because James is smart. Because this is not the... Because, you know, if he assigns it.
I'm sure. It's a lot more than that.
But that part is the key, I think. Because if... You know what I mean? Because if he just does it and assigns... And we don't have assignment.
Good evening, and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, July 28th. My name is Jim Lehan. To my right, who has now got up and gone to my left, is my fellow selectman, Mr. Palumbo. To my left, my fellow selectman, Mr. Bugby. To his left, Jack Hathaway, our town administrator. And to his left, Marion Harrington, our executive assistant. I want to inform everybody that this meeting is being both video and audio taped. I hope everybody is having a great summer. We don't have a long agenda tonight, but we do have an important agenda. We have a little bit of housecleaning that we'll take care of shortly. Mr. Hathaway, if you'll allow me, just to go through this. And then, we're going to spend the evening, I don't think for too long, but anyway, talking with Mr. Valone regarding a Southwood property to see if we are pretty much in agreement in terms of the... I'll call it a contract, I think, for lack of another term, anyway, as it relates to the proposed project. But first, we have some housecleaning to take care of. Oh, there is one more person I would like to say thank you to tonight. Someone you never see, someone who is behind the camera, who is here, meeting after meeting after meeting. Christina Gleason. I know I can't get her to come out and be visual for the camera. I wish she would. But Christina, you're very, very... We're very grateful for all you do. You're a volunteer. You're here night after night for the Board of Selectmen's meetings, and I have been neglectful in not thanking you for all the years that you have helped us. So, thank you very much, Christina. Mr. Hathaway.
So, I have two action items for you tonight. Please vote to approve the annual Girl Scout Jamboree and Picnic at the Gazeebo on Norfolk Town Hill on Wednesday, September 16th, 2015, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the second thing is, please vote to... We have a letter of interest from Andrea Langhauser, expressing an interest to be on the Community Preservation Committee. I believe that is for Precinct 1.
It is.
So, we have an opening there, and a letter of interest. And I know Jim said he spoke to the chairman of the CPC.
He did. I spoke to the chair, and they would love to have her. She's been on the board, on and off, on many occasions. She was the planning board representative for years, but is no longer on the planning board. We still have an opening for an at-large position for CPC. And I've heard that there might be one other candidate, so we can accommodate that candidate if that happens. So, what is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to appoint Andrea Langhauser for Precinct 1 to CPC. Is there a term, Jack, there?
Do you know when that would expire?
We'll clarify the expiration date. Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think it's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Andrea.
Andrea, thank you for volunteering.
Oh, go ahead, Jack. I was gonna just make a motion to approve the minutes, but you can...
Go right ahead.
Okay. I think, which one was Jeff? One was Jeff. I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 18th, 2015, June 30th, 2015, and July 15th, 2015.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That was easy. Jack, do you have anything else that we need to catch up on here quickly?
Not a whole lot. We are interviewing on Thursday for a new firefighter. We will, in next month, also bring forward a number of police officers for appointments. We have a new sergeant. Well, I'll let Chief Stone make that announcement for you, but we have a new sergeant joining the ranks, as Sergeant McConnell retired. So, we wish David well. And we have a new police officer, and shortly, in a few more months, we'll have another new police officer. We're replacing two retirements. So, that's it. The firefighter interviews will be done on Wednesday, and then the fire chief gets to make that appointment under his... Under our strong chief assignment to the chief. So, we'll have a new firefighter, and we'll be fully staffed in that department as well.
And we'll have financials in August.
We will have financials in August. Julie has captured all the encumbrances now. We've completed doing the last two accounts payable for fiscal year '15, as we close that out. Now, we've... All the departments have encumbered anything that is still on projects that are ongoing that they'll use FY '15 money for. So now Julie can take those into account and come up with our final balance sheet, if you will, for 2015. She'll start creating the free cash and balance sheet that will go into the state. I had briefly mentioned to Jim that Department of Revenue has been making a lot of... I don't want to say noise, but letting it be known that because of all the early retirements and some changeover at the Department of Revenue, they are concerned that they're going to be able to certify free cash for towns for the fall, as well as they're also concerned for being able to do the new growth certifications and, most importantly, the tax rate certifications at the end of December. So, they're kind of giving us a heads-up that they're going to be scrambling to get those done, just because they've lost a number of staff. So, I hope that doesn't come into a problem for us, but may require us to do some... I know we had some plans from the Maytown meeting to do some appropriations in November. Worst-case scenario was, we would have to do those. We could put that off until May. So, that was...
Do they have any deadline? I know that's short-staffed. Is there any statutory deadline they have to certify by, or is it really at their discretion and ability?
No, they... They don't.
I know they try to do it as quick as they can.
They do it as quick as possible. You know, unfortunately, we're losing our field rep. Kathy Reed was a wonderful asset to the town, the Division of Local Services rep that did all of our financial reviews for us. She's retired, so we'll be getting a new assignment. Hopefully, they're bringing Kathy back on a consulting basis this fall. That's... That was her plan. But, no, they don't. So, we would... We did it... We've done it once in the past 10 years. We've mailed out estimated tax bills.
Oh, okay, right.
So, we could do that. So, it won't kill us on the cash flow purposes. There's things we can do to work around this, but it's frustrating to have to send out that stuff. It cost us a little bit of money with mailings, et cetera, but not the end of the world.
Mr. Palumbo, any other business? Nope. Scott?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
So, I've got some time. About 7:15.
Norfolk Cable Television is going to do some public service. They have NCTV Public Service Announcement Date. So, if you have any ideas for public service announcements that you want to get out... I know I've blocked off a time with them, just... I don't know exactly what topics I'm going to talk about with them, but it is September 18th. So, if you have any public service announcements that you either want to have me or a department head work with on NCTV, or you want to go star in for NCTV, that I encourage you to let me know, or contact NCTV directly. It's the first time...
When is that going to be, Jack?
September 18th, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Would we do something... Could we do something around Southwood? Does that make sense? I know George has already done a program on there, but...
Yeah, we could.
It's getting closer to the date of November, so it might be good. You know, if we have things wrapped up.
So, something on the police and fire.
Yeah, I was gonna say, police and fire.
Just one sort of public service announcement. The Pondville Medical Building is having its grand opening tomorrow.
9:00 to 11:00.
I guess that means that all the offices are occupied. I'm not sure quite what it means, but they're doing a little ribbon-cutting tomorrow. And we've been invited to attend. I believe you're going, aren't you?
Yeah, you're going.
I'm going. I don't know, Jeff, have you?
I'm gonna try to go.
Okay, good.
Ray and I are going?
Yep. Certainly, a wonderful project for the town, and we're grateful for them being here. And we certainly appreciate, not only the services they provide to our residents, but we also like the revenue. So, we have to say the truth. But it's certainly been a wonderful project, and it went very well. So, we're excited about tomorrow.
So, that appointment to CPC was through 2018, three-year appointment.
So, we amend the motion accordingly? Agreeable?
And the at-large one that we're looking for is a... Will expire next summer.
Oh, so you don't have to do it. You can try it out.
A one-year term.
You can do it for a one-year term.
Try it out. Good way.
Again, just for folks at home, we are looking for a volunteer to participate on CPC. It's a filling vacant term. It's a one-year term. It can be from any one of the three districts. So, if anyone has interest, please send a note into Marion, and we need volunteers. We will take all the help we can get. And CPC's been busy lately, so it's a fun board to be on. Anything else, Jack?
No, I'm ready for...
Okay. Well, it's pretty close to 7:15, so, George, why don't you come up and join us? Ray, please? Come on up.
Jim, originally overhand heard Nancy and Richard wondering what time the ribbon-cutting was tomorrow.
Oh, 9:00 to 11:00.
9:30. Nancy, thank you very much. As always, you're on top of things.
Well, the invite's at 9:00 to 11:00, so I'm not sure what time to cut.
Actually, I think it's... I'd get there at 9:00. I think the speakers start at 9:30. So, you probably want to get there at 10:00.
If you want to hear Mr. Lehan speak, yes.
Are you speaking?
I don't know if TV's covering it or not. I hope so.
Where's the gym?
Thanks, Jack.
Team gym.
George, welcome. Ray, welcome.
Thank you.
Just quickly, a little bit about the purpose for this evening, but just one thing, just to talk about, for those of you that may follow our postings in terms of our meetings. This meeting originally got posted as having an executive session. The reason for that was that George had expressed a willingness to share with our board the negotiations that he is having with the developers. He is still in negotiations with them. Those negotiations are privileged, and in order for him to share that with us, he did not want that to be in a public forum. In hindsight, as we thought through that, every meeting we have held on this project has been a public meeting. And I think that's a standard we have to maintain. So, I sent George an email, asked if he'd be okay with scratching the executive session and continuing this process in public session, and I'm sure George will use his discretion appropriately as to what he can and cannot share. So, we're going to continue the process of making this as public as we possibly can, and I thank George for being willing to do that. But that may hopefully share a little bit of the confusion as to why we bounced back and forth. The executive session was not related to the activity of this board. It was to George's negotiations with his contractors. And so, anyway, before we begin, I just want again... Once again, want to thank some folks that have participated in this. Peter Diamond's here tonight. Peter and Aaron Hunt were two citizens that volunteered to participate in this committee that spent well over a year working with George, trying to put together the framework of an agreement. Clearly, this is a very large project, but there are parts... We struggled continually through this process in understanding our boundaries, you know, where we have the authority, where our permitting boards have the authority. And I think we've kind of worked our way through that pretty well. But Peter, thank you very much for your efforts, and Aaron Hunt as well. I want to mention Tom Gilbert from the Board of Health, John Weddleton and Walter Byron from the Planning Board, Joyce Terrio from Conservation. I was the representative from the Board of Selectmen, but I would mention that both my counterparts also participated in various meetings as well. Bob Bullock, the Building Inspector, Ray Goff, the Planner, and Chris Weeder from Zoning Board of Appeals. I hope I haven't left anybody out. But we had all of our permitting boards represented. We had citizens represented. We had our building department represented. Jack... Well, Jack out. Jack was at several meetings as well. So, thank you all for a lot of meetings, well over dozen, 15 meetings, if not more, and well over a year. What we hope to do tonight is to go through the framework of the agreement, be sure that we are in agreement in concept, and that it's consistent with what the committee had recommended. And then, if we are, we'll turn this over to council, yours and ours. I don't care where we start. Doesn't matter. Probably better on our side, actually. And we'll let your guys tear it apart. And then, once we get that agreement, I promised the committee that I would bring it back to the committee for one more sitting, which we will do. And then, our next step, we need to have a meeting to figure out how we're going to communicate all this in an effective way to the residents at large. One other thing before we go through it, I just want to mention that a week ago yesterday, we had a meeting of what's known as the Pondville Residents. Nancy Connors is here, or Nancy and Richard from that area, and we... I want to thank Betsy Whitney for her efforts in communicating this. Betsy, you're here. Thank you for communicating this to all of the residents. It was really a lot of work, and we're very grateful for your efforts. It was very well-attended. I don't remember the count, but 50 people would be a guess, 40, 50 people. Two issues that came out of that, there were a number, but two key issues that I don't want to lose sight of, that we really can't address in this agreement, but I want to make sure that people understand we heard. One is water, and it isn't the water to the site as much as it is the wells and water to the surrounding residents. And we're going... This board, we're responsible for the Water Division, so we're going to work on that and see where we can go with that. It's not part of this agreement, because it's not George's responsibility, it's ours. So, that's an open issue for us, that we can't close the door on tonight, but we're not neglecting that issue. The other issue clearly is traffic. It's been an issue over there forever with the ball fields, with the Patriots. It's not an issue, again, we can address with this agreement for two reasons. One, we don't have the authority. We're not a permitting board. So, the Planning Board has oversight for traffic, and 1A is a state highway. So, the state will have input to the traffic. So, we hear it. We know it's a problem. This board does have authority over truck exclusions and one-ways and things of that nature that are... Anything of that nature is on the table, that we can think of to ease the burden. So, again, we don't have answers, but I wanted to make sure everyone knew we heard the issue, and it won't be neglected.
And I just asked you when you say...
Grab the microphone, Nancy.
On the table.
I'm sorry?
When you say it's on the table.
Grab the microphone. Yeah.
Nancy Connors, 30 Everett Streets. When you say it's on the table... I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I want you to explain what you mean by "on the table."
We understand that it is an issue. We don't have all the solutions. So, we're going to continue to work through the solutions. We'll have future meetings. We'll meet with Walpole. We'll do whatever we can do to ease the burden. But we don't... This board, the three of us, we don't have the authority to dictate traffic patterns, entrances, exits, things of that nature to this project. That's the Planning Board. And that's what I mean. We will work... We can work with Walpole to do truck exclusions, one-ways, whatever, Nancy. I'm just thinking out loud. We can do those things. But we cannot direct this project as to what their sites will be, you know, what their entrances will be, things of that nature, because we don't have that authority. That's what I mean by that. Richard.
Richard Connors, 30 Everett Street. The third item that we discussed at that meeting was the noise factor, 10 years' worth of noise while the construction's going on.
Construction?
That's a real problem.
Yeah. You're right. Okay.
George is going to cast our floor.
Yeah.
Thank you, Richard. Okay. George, I'm going to turn it over to you to kind of walk us through parts of this contract. A couple of parts I'll touch on, a couple of parts you'll touch on, and see if we're... Ray, gentlemen, jump in any time. It's a free-flow conversation.
Okay.
See if we can nail this down.
Thank you. Well, it's good to be back in Norfolk, and I'm happy that we're getting close to the end of the initial stage of the permitting process, which is to get the overlay zoning and the developer agreement adopted at the Falltown Meeting in November. And to that end, we are talking tonight about the developer agreement, or contract, between my company and the town, which spells out what we're going to be doing, what the town's going to be doing. It sort of helps us to get in writing what all the expectations are and the discussions we've had up till now. So, it's a four-page document, and it's been on the Norfolk website since it was posted there two months ago? About that? Just about the time that the advisory committee finished working on the plan and working on the first draft of the agreement. So, what you're looking at is a document that you've been looking at since it was posted. And what we're going to talk about tonight... So, I'll go quickly through the things that haven't changed, and there's only a few things that have. And I really think the appropriate thing to do tonight would be to focus on the things that have changed and why they've changed, and what the intention is behind the change. So, I will do that. And there's a couple spots where I know Jim and possibly the other selectmen may want to fill in around the edges of that discussion. So, the first page is basically just a little bit of a recitation about the agreement itself, what the purpose of it is. As I mentioned a moment ago, it's sort of a contract between us and the town that spells out the agreement of the parties. It then has a brief synopsis of the proposed redevelopment, which is very quickly, the 220 units of age-restricted housing, townhouses, 180-bed assisted living, independent living, 150 units of luxury apartments, market rate, and then commercial building with 16,000 feet of retail space on the ground floor and 16,000 feet of office space on the second floor. Within the assisted living, independent living, we're shooting for a minimum of 120 affordable housing units, which would be credited to the town's 40B requirement. Second page talks about traffic mitigation, that there'll be an operating and maintenance plan. Each of the different assets will have their own operating and maintenance plan. They'll be taking care of their own roads, their own snow plowing, road maintenance. All that'll be funded and paid for by the occupants of the residents. Will not impact the town's budget. It talks about some impact fees, which actually come up a little bit later. So, rather than do that twice, I'll just push that off till a little bit later. The difference... The word "proportionally" was added to that impact fee statement, because what we agreed to with the committee was that of the $3.8 million total impact fee, $1 million would be paid upfront, and the balance would be paid proportionally. We added the word "proportionally," just to really define it a little bit better. Proportionally, as the building permits are applied for. So, if each building permit doesn't pay its share of the overall impact fee balance, it doesn't get a building permit. And everybody figured that would be a very safe way to make sure that all the money gets put in. Then, we talk about zoning. It's currently Zone C6. What's going to be brought up for a vote in November will be approval for a special overlay district, which is going to allow these four uses, the four uses I just mentioned, the townhouses, the apartments, the assisted living, independent living, and the office retail building. So, four uses would be on this overlay district and become permitted uses. And then, we're going to also allow specific densities. Added to that paragraph in the next version that you'll see, when the new version gets put on the town website, would be that the overlay district will allow specific uses and maximum densities. So, on the plan, we worked out with the advisory committee where those four uses and those specific densities, meaning number of units, which I read off the first page. So, that'll be in the vote in November.
And George, I think... Sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, it's right.
At the Southwood... At the Pondville, I mean, it's appropriate dimension that can't ever increase on that. It could always be less. You know, just so people...
Maximum density.
Maximum density. So, it's not going to change. You know, you're not going to see 440 units of townhouses, anything. So, people know that what you see here is the maximum.
Maximum. Could be less, won't be more. Jim talked about water. The part of water I just want to talk about is the impact fee part. So, part of the $3.8 million, $3 million of the $3.8 million, is for a new town water well, and that's broken down into two pieces. The actual cost of the well, which is $1.5 million. And then, there's a possibility that if the water comes up and needs treatment, that the town's experts in the water department said that that could cost up to another $1.5 million for treatment. So, we're going to cover up to $1.5 million additional for treatment. So, it could be as much as $3 million. Minimum of $1.5 million, if it doesn't require any treatment, if it's... If the water is perfectly drinkable, plus up to another $1.5 million if it needs to go through treatment to make it drinkable. Let's see. So, then we talk about... We're also going to pay for the connection costs. So, we're going to be connecting to the town water system, and we're going to pay for the cost of connection to the nearest pipe. Then we go into stormwater, and essentially, we just... It's the same. We think we're going to need up to 80... It originally said that the estimates show a need for 88,000 gallons a day. We just added the words "up to 88,000 gallons a day," because when we finally get into engineering, it could possibly be less. So, again, just clarifying language. The next paragraph where it talks about additional analysis shall be completed, we're looking to strike the words "in the summer, spring of 2015," because spring's already gone, and summer's almost gone, and we didn't want to... We didn't think it was really relevant when that has to be done. It just has to be done. So, the new sentence at the beginning of that paragraph would now read, "Additional analysis shall be completed to determine if the soils can adequately accept the stormwater and wastewater disposal needs of the development." The last paragraph on Page 2 talks about the hazardous materials cleanup. There's no change to that. We're going to clean up the three known areas of contamination, which is, just to quickly summarize, there's hazardous materials like asbestos in the hospital building. That will be remediated and removed when the hospital comes down. There's a landfill that's going to be investigated and remediated appropriately. And there's an oil spill under the northeast corner of the hospital, I think it is, which will also be investigated and remediated appropriately. And we've agreed to... No change in the next paragraph. Now, we're on the top of Page 3. No change there in terms of, we're going to hire our own licensed site remediation professional, and we're also going to pay for a licensed site remediation professional, which will be hired by the town. We're looking to strike the last sentence in that paragraph, because it's... We just don't think it's appropriate. And that sentence reads, "The town's Board of Health and the Conservation Commission may also have some input on which method," meaning cleanup method, "is chosen for the cleanup." So, the actual way that works is that, you know, the Board of Health is going to be involved, and the Conservation Commission is going to be involved in hiring the licensed site remediation professional that'll represent the town, and then it'll be the town's licensed professional and my licensed professional that'll agree on the method of cleanup. So, it's just really a clarification. It doesn't really change the fundamental part, that you'll be represented and I'll be represented, each with our own licensed professional, and those two licensed professionals will work together on getting the remediation complete. Jim, you wanted to talk about bonding?
This agreement originally talked about bonding, but it's our opinion that we don't have the authority in this agreement to require that, that that's only a requirement that the Planning Board can exercise when they get into the site plan review. So, we will add language in here that says the bonding will be basically determined by the Planning Board as part of the site review plan process. We, as a board, in an agreement of this nature, according to... We, as a board, in an agreement of this nature, according to, from what I understand from council, we don't have the authority to do that. So only your board has the authority to do that.
Yeah, I mean, the only comment I had, one of the versions of the agreement, I'm not sure how far back, I think probably about three weeks ago or so, was the first time I think I had noticed reference to certificate of occupancy as opposed to the application for the building permit in terms of the timing of the bonding. So as Jim says, we don't necessarily need to have that discussion tonight, but to the extent that, you know, I'll be one of the people on the planning board that will be involved, that's something that I'd like to understand a bit more in terms of why certificate of occupancy as opposed to something which is more proactive in terms of the whole development process.
There's advantages and disadvantages to both, depending upon where you're standing.
I'm looking at it from where I'm standing.
I know. And me too. But there are some advantages to the town, there's some advantages to the developer. But we can go through that at that point.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to give you the heads up.
Sure. I mean, I can respond just initially and then we'll, obviously we'll have the conversation again when it comes to decisions.
If it pleases the chair, I'll leave it up to you, Jim, as to whether...
Well, let's defer it because it's really not an issue that is relevant to this agreement.
No, it's not. That's fine. So we'll just go with language that says...
We'll leave that in Mr. Palumbo's capable hands when the time comes.
Yeah, that'll be the purview of the planning board. That's fine. The next paragraph, we talk about affordable housing. And actually, there's some new news now that is potentially good news, that I want to have researched a little more thoroughly. And if it turns out that the good news is true, incorporate the new numbers into the developer agreement. So right now, the developer agreement is based on the concept that we have 180-unit elder care building, we'll call it, of which 120 units were what we, what's been termed independent living units. And really, the only thing that makes the difference between an independent living unit and an assisted living unit is that the independent living units have a kitchen. And we were told that, by one of the consultants, that you can't get 40B credit unless the units are independent living units, meaning they have a kitchen. And that if you take 25% of those 120 units, which would be 30 units, and you dedicate them for the income restrictions, that you get credit for all 120 units towards your 40B obligation. So this language reflects that understanding, and that's what we're going to do. What I found out just today, I met with a company that is in the assisted living and the independent living business, and for this site, and they told me their understanding is radically different, that it does not matter if they have a kitchen, it does not matter if they're called independent living. It could be independent living, it could be assisted living, as long as the 25% of the number of units is income restricted to those affordability requirements, you can count the whole thing. So if that's true, then, and they're going to have their lawyer write an opinion letter and also give me a citation of the law, because as I was telling these guys before the meeting started, I've had legal opinions before that turned out not to be right. So I told them I'd like a legal opinion and the citation, meaning the actual law, Massachusetts law, that says that. And if that's true, then all 180 units would be included, 25% of them will be affordable. So now instead of, instead of 30 units, it'll be 25% of 180, which is...
Forty-five.
Forty-five will be included. And then you'll get credit for all 180 units under your 40B, instead of only 120. So if there's a change here based on the legal analysis and the citation under the law that this company's attorney is going to provide me with and that I will provide the selectmen with, it's only going to mean there'll be more 40B credit coming out of the project. And there will, I would look to not have a differentiation between the types of units. It shouldn't matter how many are independent and how many are assisted, if they all count. So those changes would be incorporated in the next draft, if in fact, that turns out to be true.
So do you ever, George, the memory care and hospice, will those ever be affordable? Or is it really just the, what you have is the 120 independent living? Are those the only thing, you know?
Well, right now, it's only the independent living because only they count.
Right.
Because they have to have a kitchen.
I didn't know if you'd ever offer memory care at an affordable rate, I don't know how that works. I don't know how that works in the assisted living field.
Yeah, no, the memory care units and hospice units never have a kitchen.
Not a kitchen, affordable. Because I don't know what the going rate...
Well, they could be affordable.
Okay.
Yeah, they could be affordable. I would prefer to leave that up to the operator and let them decide, because I think the real purpose here is to get the 40B credit. And I don't think we should try to restrict the operator as to what the ratio is between independent, assisted, hospice, memory care. I think they should let that work, because the market dictates. What they believe the market wants is what they're going to build.
Right.
And so, so I don't know, actually. It's a little bit up in the air right now. We need the legal opinion and then we need the change of document accordingly if there is a legal opinion.
But we're talking about making 25%, so 45, 25% of the 180 total units...
Right.
...affordable, whether they're...
You don't know the mix.
I don't know the mix.
And we don't care.
And I don't think we care. I mean, I don't care. I hope you don't care, because it'd be better to leave it up to the operator.
We want credit for the 180 and we want these individual units, but the mix, I don't...
So we won't put a restriction as to mix, is what I'm proposing. Okay.
The good news is it either stays as is or it gets better.
It's either stays as is or gets better, exactly. So that's the issue there. And then there's another change down near the bottom, which is really, again, I think it's just a clarification. I had a concern that if we're not able to get adequate sewage treatment capacity in the ground, that we might have to shrink the size of the development. And right now, what we proposed is 20% affordable. So I just wanted to make it clear that if for any reason the total number of units gets reduced because we don't have adequate sewage capacity, that we stick with that 20% of whatever the number of units are that ultimately get built. So I think that's more clarification and fairness than anything else. Jim, I think you wanted, oh, you already talked about traffic.
I did. Well, we're going to keep this in the agreement. There will be language in here on traffic because we want to be sure that Valley Street, Dedham Street, and Nancy, there was one other street that you folks mentioned that evening that we wanted to include in this study. What was it?
Everett Street.
Well, I know Everett Street is the street. I know that. But there was another street, though.
Hill Street.
Is it Hill?
Hill Street.
Hill, thank you.
Maybe 115, yeah.
So we'll add Hill and Everett to this agreement.
Wasn't that the guy from 115, though, too?
Yeah, it's the one that goes up on the side, Hill.
Right, but that gentleman lived on 115.
So we wanted to add those. All right, thank you.
Correct, yeah.
All right. And, oh, one other thing, the next one, an open space and recreation. We had language in here that said the development shall include walking paths depicted on the plan, would circulate the site and connect to other neighbors, commercial areas, and other nearby recreational areas. The committee thought that was a good thing. We were all in favor of that, right, Pete? The neighbors are dead against it. And we asked for a show of hands for the 40 or 50 people who were there, and it was overwhelming that you do not want those trails. So we're willing to delete that from the agreement, but, you know, those are issues, again, that fall to your board. So even though we delete it, the planning board can require it. So you guys need to stay on top of that one. But we will take it out of the agreement because obviously you're the ones most impacted by it and it was overwhelming that you didn't want them. So we'll take it out.
Can I ask why?
The residents said that?
Yeah.
They said that people might use the trails to get in behind the houses and rob them.
They're already doing that now, right?
There is, the traffic, the railroad tracks, they walk them to the football field. I mean, they're frequently traveled by people that don't live around there. They walk the track back. And there was a fear that having more trails and more access back there might create more vandalism, theft, things of that nature, because there have been issues with that.
I see.
So they live there, so I think we have to be sensitive to that.
Oh, sure. No, I just didn't know.
It's funny, yeah, until you find out.
We said the same thing. It's beautiful land, I mean, you know, but, you know, if they want to walk it, you'll find a way to walk it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And that's something the committee couldn't have known, because they don't live there.
Yep.
So site plan approval, no change. Fiscal impact on the town, no change. Operation and maintenance is going to be handled by, I think I mentioned that earlier, that's going to be handled by the residents, occupants of the property. I had added that the last paragraph, the last thing that's changed here from the agreement you all saw on the website, is that under the paragraph entitled "Agreement is Binding on All Parties," I just asked for a little bit of clarification there. So now it reads, "The agreement shall run concurrently and for the duration of the overlay district referenced above." Originally, it just said the agreement shall run with the land and be binding upon the And I felt that, you know, any agreement that can be made can be unmade. So I thought it would be fair that as long as the zoning overlay district is still in effect, then this agreement is still in effect. And that's it. That's the fourth and final page. There are no other changes than what was agreed upon by the advisory committee, and that was put on the website a couple months ago.
Betsy, grab the microphone.
Can I ask a question after Betsy?
Sure, of course. Elizabeth Whitney, 26th Valley Street, Pondville. At the meeting on the 20th, a bit of time was spent discussing the conservation restriction. I believe it's 40% of the land, George.
Yes.
About 40 acre.
About 40.
Yeah. And there was some understanding, and I think it was erroneous, that conservation restrictions over time can lapse, fall apart, landfill can take place, building and so forth. And I think the public would need to be educated as to the meaning of imperperity and what a CR restriction is. Would you agree?
Yes. That's the intention, that's what's occurred. The wetlands have been delineated and officially accepted by, the delineation map was officially accepted by the Conservation Commission. A form called an ANRAN form was filed. As I understand the process, this is a deed restricted area that is off limits to all development forever, is the way I understand it.
It'll be recorded, you're right, it'll be recorded with the property at the registry.
At the registry of deeds.
And it takes an act of legislation to change.
I'm just curious, who was the wetland specialist who delineated? Was it Lenore? Do we know?
I don't know.
It was last year.
I don't know.
I hope.
LEC Consultants, I think was their name?
I don't know. It's done by our conservation boards, so I don't know.
It was a woman, I know that. And I think the company name was LEC.
Probably Lenore.
I hope so, because that's good. Okay.
But once that's in place, it's there.
Good. Thank you.
I just had a, just, so I understand the traffic impact mitigation and pedestrian I guess what I'm trying, my goal, one of my goals of this property is to try and connect it to the intersection, sidewalk, connect it to the intersection of 1A and 115. Is that, when you say sidewalks along the property and Dedham Street, I know you struck offsite at some point.
Right.
The planning board typically, and Jeff can correct me, but the planning board typically with a new subdivision, not only puts sidewalks in the subdivision, but they'll work out some type of an agreement to connect that subdivision to something, generally the center of town or something. You know, I think for the residents' benefit, we want to connect this subdivision to those restaurants, so people could walk to the restaurants in that portion of town that we're trying to grow intelligently. So I guess I just, I'm hoping that, you know, through the planning board process or through this development process, that, you know, we work collaboratively to build that sidewalk. Because I hate, you know, we all hate when we build subdivisions that are islands. We want to, we want to connect this to the...
Well, I don't know how that process works, because I don't own that property. So if there's some process, we could talk about that.
Yeah. So the, I mean, the activity would take place in the right of way, so it's something that, you know, doesn't necessarily involve multiple private parties and such. It's something that the planning board would work with you and discuss what is considered reasonable mitigation in terms of offsite, but related mitigation. And so I think what Jack is referring to is a stretch of Route 1A from the edge of this parcel...
Which would be Valley Street.
To, yeah, yes, to Route 115, basically, that corner. There's a...
That's where the life...
Yeah, there's currently a business called Transit Seating there. So presently, I know in front of that business, it's grass basically all the way up to the curb, I believe. I was looking at it recently in preparation for the meeting. So that would be something the planning board, I'm just one member of the board, but that would be one of the things that the planning board would think about and discuss with you, along with a number of other items.
The purpose of having this component in the agreement is to ensure that Everett, Hill, Dedham, and one other one, Valley, are included in the process. That was the purpose of this. So we want to be sure that those roads are part of the traffic study. Betsy, do you have another question?
Well, regarding sidewalks, Jack, what was, did you have a vision as to where sidewalks would be? Are you saying down Route 115 toward transit seating, up that way?
Down 1A to transit seating. So from...
Oh, I didn't mean one, sorry. One goes...
Yeah. So people can walk from the new, the new homes, they can walk to horse and carriage.
They have their own curb, they have their own sidewalk.
Good, they can...
And beyond, but, you know.
But that will be a planning board discussion.
That's a planning board decision.
Because we've got a sidewalk on 115 all the way to the center of town, so...
Exactly.
Not that I could walk that far, but some people will walk.
No, but we have, it's great, yeah, okay.
You can make it, we just bring you a couple of sandwiches.
Couple days, yeah, yeah.
Couple of days.
Make an incentive for you, then.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
I actually, you know, this whole question of phasing, it's probably, you know, one of the more complicated aspects of the project. Now, I know, you know, looking at the document dated May 2015, which was well done, it's actually dated May 30th, 2015, so this particular document, George. So there's a project schedule in here, so can we just circle back and look at this in the context of, you know, some of these discussions, potential changes? I just want to understand whether...
Sure.
...this changes in any way. So in this document, the projected schedule of construction, and fair enough, parenthetically assumption at that time, 2017 to 2019, the assisted living, memory care, rental apartments and commercial office space will be completed over a period of three years. One-third of each segment will be completed and operational each year during the span. So that's statement number one. And just below that, 2017 to 2022, that timeframe, the comment is, "The townhouses will be completed over a period of six years. One-sixth, one-sixth of the homes will be completed each year during the span." So how are we feeling about that assumption, I guess?
What was the date on that report?
May 30th.
The agreement says May 9th, so this is an early, what's referenced in the agreement is an earlier version, I have a feeling. So we just want to make sure that when we do the final, we use the right date of the right agreement. That's just one point, not directly responding to your question, it was just sort of a...
This is the May 9th.
Little something.
Okay, so this is page three, projected schedule of construction. Because, so this gets to this whole thing about phasing, which I, you know, and then that, of course, you know, we'll get into bonding and...
It's exactly the same.
Let's talk about the purpose of the phasing. I think it's more important than those, than those dates right now. The purpose of the phasing was to make sure that the affordable housing units get completed well in advance of the completion of the whole project. Nobody wanted to be in a situation where you got promised 120 units of affordable housing and then everything else got built and not that. So we, first of all, if I have an affordable housing developer on board, like the one I met today, hopefully, this is really a non-issue, because they're going to get to work on that right away. Probably what'll happen is the apartments will get started, the townhouses will get started, and the assisted living, independent living building will get started simultaneously. So it's really not a situation of how long it takes to build anything. It's more a situation of, we got to make sure that there's some point at which the assisted living has to be done before the rest of the project can get complete. And so what we talked about with the committee was, we talked about a schedule like that. And I also, I needed an absorption schedule to be able to calculate the taxes coming into the town, which ultimately drives the fiscal impact. So those assumptions were primarily to try to lay out the impact to the town in terms of revenue coming in and impact, cost impacts. So it, we also used it as a way to make sure that the affordable part got done first. Not first, but well before completion of all the other improvements. So I, so I think that we're going to stick with a plan like that, but I just want to make sure that the moment the assisted living gets complete and you've got credit for your full, there's no further restrictions. That's really my only concern, because you could read it that even if you got the assisted living done in time, early on, you could still only build one-sixth of the townhouses per year, or you could build, you know, the apartments at some slow pace. And that wasn't the purpose of the pacing, of the absorption schedule.
Right, right.
Totally not the purpose of it. It was much more to lay out a conservative absorption schedule to drive the tax, the tax increases coming into the town and the cost impacts coming into the town. So when it comes to the actual planning board application, we can address all of that. My hope is that by then, I've got all the end users lined up and committed, and we can make a very definitive absorption schedule, construction schedule slash absorption schedule, and build that right in to the whole plan, to the phasing plan. So this is really just a, an estimate, a projection, based on what I thought were fairly conservative absorption rates. And it also accomplished the intention of the committee and of the selectmen that you got to make sure the affordable housing units get delivered before you're at your endpoint on the market rate housing. Is that responsive to your question? Okay.
Scott?
Nope, I'm good.
Jack?
No, we haven't started creating the warrant article yet, have we?
I think the end of August is the deadline to be on schedule for the November meeting, if I'm remembering correctly.
We've never done a warrant article for an overlay district before that I can remember.
Not one like this, no, yeah.
Obviously, we're going to need some. Have you ever done one, overlay district? I think you did, didn't you do one down in Rhode Island?
I've worked on overlay districts, yeah.
Okay. So we're going to throw this in your lap.
Never done a warrant article, though.
Well, just give us an idea.
You can frame the overlay district language. I'm sure we can, I mean, we've got some very high-paid legal folks that I'm sure can figure out how to make it into a warrant article.
Sounds like a deal.
Okay.
Not to be redundant, so there's an exhibit three for a phasing plan, so do we have that? Because I, I'm not sure.
Exhibit three is down at the bottom, phasing plan. Yeah, we do have the phasing plan.
It's on the website.
We, we don't have it here. It is on the website?
Yeah, that's on the website.
Yeah, it is.
That's not a phasing plan in terms of what you're talking about, how the project gets built out. That's a phasing plan of what the subdivisions are going to be within the property. There's going to be four major subdivisions in the property, one for each of the four asset types.
Okay.
That's the plan.
So I've seen that, I've seen that.
Yeah, and, and we, I think it's actually referred to in the diagram as Phase 1, 2, 3, 4.
It is.
But that's not relevant to sequencing the project, it's not relevant to your question about making sure that the affordables get done in time. That's just, this is how the project's going to be subdivided, and these are the phases that it's going to be built in.
Just identifies the components.
Yeah, it just identifies the components, exactly. And those subdivision lines may change a little bit as we finalize where the wastewater treatment plant's going to be?
So, I mean, the words here, I just want to make sure it's sufficiently clear, phasing plan parenthetically by proponent? Do we want to clarify that language a little better? So, I mean, it is an integral part of the agreement, I just want to, because I think the typical person would read that and think that it's a detailed phasing plan in terms of, you know, what properties are being developed when.
That's a fair question.
Page you on, where's that?
Probably a better way to.
Page four, the last page, George. Exhibit three, phasing plan in parentheses by proponent.
Ah, gotcha.
That was something you had proposed, that's why it's.
Okay.
Gotcha. So what do you want to?
Better define it.
Or develop it.
Better describe it, I guess.
That actually is, is that's actually a subdivision plan. That's really what it is. So I would suggest we rename it what it really is, which is a subdivision plan.
Is this the conceptual plan, is that what you?
No, there's a, there's a thing with colors.
There's another one that has the same drawing you're looking at, only with the whole big block of townhouses one color, the area where the apartments are another color, assisted living another color, and the commercial building another color. That was posted on the website, too.
If you get rid of your black and white TV, Jack, you'd be okay on it.
Hold it up, Betsy. Uh, no.
Well, that, no, it's, it's.
I think that's the snow, that's the snow storage plan, I think.
Oh, it's got different.
Has four colors.
So next steps.
Yes, next step.
You will work on, Ray, you work on the warrant article.
Yep.
How about if we let our council take a first run at this?
Okay.
Agreeable?
We'll review.
And we'll get it to you.
Okay.
And then once we get agreement on that, we'll get a quick meeting with the committee to review it again. And then we, as a board, need to figure out how we, personally, I have a bias that we should do a mailing to every voter in the town and offer with as much detail and information about this as we can. I think the project is that important.
I didn't hear what you said.
I would like to do a mailing to every voter.
A mailing? Oh, that's what I didn't hear.
Every voter, every registered voter with all the information. We want informed votes, however they may be, they need to be informed, so.
We'd like yes votes better.
Well, I understand. Democracy shall rule.
That's right.
Ms. Connors?
Nancy Connors, I've lived in town since 1961. When we moved in, 252 were purchased, 65,000 people built a house. This entity is horrific. I'm concerned about the number of people who are going to reside at this area and the impact it's going to have on us in this town. This side of town has done very well. In 1963 or '64, part of the planning board, I told them to stop treating this area as their albatross, because it's our future part of Gulf, which it obviously is. The money that's generated at that area, if they're resident, and we don't educate a child, we don't have expertise, we don't have anything. Many of the things George is talking about, I'm concerned about if for any reason this stops along the way for any reason, the taxes that he's projecting that want to come to this town could be like, could come to stand itself, if everything doesn't fall out through the way he's projected it to work to be. I'm not going to be at town meeting, unfortunately. They changed the itinerary of our 60th wedding anniversary trip. George will be happy if he's there, I'm sure.
No.
No, I know, okay. But I'm really concerned about the impact on everything. Ten years, we are going to have construction going on at that area. We are going to hear it, we are going to see it. Ten years, that is horrendous for this street. Obviously, when we have the 80 to 1,000 people that are going to live there, so certainly going to use, some of them are going to use Everett Street to get out to Route 1. The traffic is horrendous on that street now. Not that the town elsewhere hasn't grown and many traffic has increased, but they haven't had the stadium. The other night after that concert with the woman, if you had to get out at the end of your driveway, you couldn't leave, and you couldn't open your windows because the noise was horrendous. We're going to suffer in our area. I do think this is going to pass. I think the majority of town people are going to say, well, let's just Pondville, it's the other end of town, it's okay, so what? Well, so what, we are going to suffer some. So every protection that can possibly be offered to this area, I would suggest it would be nice if you gave us. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, anything else?
No.
Jack? George, thanks very much for joining us this evening. You driving back to New Jersey?
Thank you again, yes.
Tonight?
To New Jersey.
Going back tonight?
Yeah. I'm used to it by now.
Yeah.
So am I.
Spending a fair amount of time with myself.
Are you going to take any action at this point, or?
Gentlemen, are we, are we comfortable with going forward with this?
Yeah.
You need counsel, yeah.
I would ask the board to vote to go forward with this agreement and send it to council. Do I have a motion to do so?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a great night, guys.
Thank you, George.
Safe travels.
Thanks, George, drive safe.
Thank you, sir.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
I would also, I would like to have a meeting sometime in September, just with these Pondville residents.
Jack, anywhere?
See what we can do, helping solve these issues.
She didn't even change the phone messages today.
Think we could do independent of what the board does.
He doesn't have to pull any thought yet.
Are you on a break?
No, no, we're still live.
No, we're still live, yeah.
I know you're live, we always assume you're live. Any timeframe for when this letter, would you go to every resident in town?
That's our hope, I would think so, I want.
Early October.
Well, I'm saying every voting, every registered voter.
Every household.
Every, every household, yeah. Meeting is November 18th, so it has to go before that, so I would probably say.
Early to mid-October, I would.
Yeah, early, mid-October, yeah. One other thing, Nancy?
Yeah.
If I can interrupt, we're still live on television, I hate to say that, but I just wanted to mention to you, hold on.
And you have the microphone.
You have a mic, so don't go away. We're going to schedule a meeting in September of our board, just with Pondville residents, to talk about your issues that this board can deal with, which is traffic, whatever water, we're going to schedule a meeting just to go over those issues. Okay?
I thought it was my last chance tonight.
Nancy, it'll never be your last chance. By the way, Richard says he's not going on that cruise.
That's fine, it'd be more fun for Nancy.
That's because he's taking a push on me in the wheelchair.
Thanks, Nance.
Better catch up, I think he forgot about you again.
Thank you.
That's why I take.
Gentlemen, any other business?
I have none, I don't think, no.
Jeff?
No, I mean, I think I'd like to put in a good word for Bob McGee, another positive here, I mean, the roads are really shaping up.
He's been phenomenal, best year I've ever seen for road work.
Thank you, he's, well, I'm saying thank you for him, he, I would agree, he's done a great job. He's got some work on King Street, doing some tree work tomorrow, and then constructing a sidewalk. We were out there again today talking to a couple of residents, and he's got that. He's going to come to our next meeting with a Chapter 90 request to do a little more paving down in that section on Ridgefield and Long Meadow. Those are in tough shape, so you'll see that in two weeks. But yeah, he's doing a great job. One thing I did want to ask you, we have a request in from a resident on Holbrook, on the side over by the, to the left as you head up 115, to put up some signs for blind driveways and, you know, use caution, et cetera. I think, you know, we haven't really dealt with too many sign issues on this, other than Everett Street, but I assume you don't have a problem if I work it out with Bob and the police chief to, we need to put up a sign or two.
Whatever's appropriate.
You know, blind driveway.
I assume it is a blind.
Stop ahead, yeah, it is. It's where some of those new subdivisions, what the resident came in and told me was, you know, where those new, not the condos, but those new additional units on, right on Holbrook, have created some, a couple of blind spots that they would just like to get.
Something the planning board should have looked into when.
I'm sure they, you know, it's, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold that against.
Predates you, you're off the hook.
Yeah, no, I think you're talking about, those were A&R lots, that on the edge of the Village Rivers, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
The ones that have a common, like a common drive?
I think they are A&R, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
I'm teasing.
It's well done, but.
Beautiful, huh?
Yeah, I think there has been some concerns expressed because there's kind of a little crest in the road, and you may not have the line of sight.
Yeah.
That you think you have, because there's a little crest in the road, and you could be coming up on this person pulling onto the driveway or something.
Exactly.
You okay with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine, it's good.
You never hurt, yeah.
You know what, do you know Bob's plan? I, and I know this street is probably more complicated in terms of the solution for Fruit Street in the vicinity of Jane and Paul's, that section of Fruit Street. He made some.
You're talking about the corner where the trees are?
Some isolated improvements, but I think that's one that perhaps was a more significant undertaking, that perhaps these, some of these other roads, he had a much clearer path, and so he's, he's made great, great progress on a number of roads, but that one, I'm just curious as to whether that one is going to see any further attention this, this year.
I don't know, I'll check. I know, you know, like you said, he's done a number of different sections of Fruit Street, and I think the last one that he did was the side opposite, on the other side of Cleveland, so I'm not sure.
Between Cleveland and Seconk, he's done, he's done that.
Yeah, so you're, but you're talking now back towards Jane and Paul's.
Yeah.
I know, I agree with you, it needs to get done, because I go up there, too. I'll find out from him when that's on the schedule, because I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but I'm, I'm quite satisfied with the work that he's done.
Oh, yeah. You know, he, you know, he does, we give him all the money, you know, all the money in the world, and he would spend it well.
Yeah. He's done well with the money he has.
Yeah.
He's maximized it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he really has. Lake Street, letter gone?
Letter's gone, yeah. He was going to send that to you today. I asked him, he said he sent it a while ago, and so he's going to send you and me a copy of it.
Okay.
No resolution, it's still just moving along, too?
No, talked to Jeff Blake about that today, and, you know, insurance council's handling that, but it's still, we've been, we, you know, the planning board was served that, served that suit two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and so now town council's responding, well, actually, the insurance council is responding to that. So we're, we're kind of hung up now in, you know, I don't want to make, I don't want to make assumptions, but I, it was frustrating that it took that long to get served, that second suit that we knew was coming. So now, you know, we're working with town, we're working with insurance council to get to respond to that.
Wouldn't they consolidate, can they consolidate them anyway? Wouldn't they push for consolidation of the?
Consolidated the first two into one, I believe.
Yeah, they were trying, they were, well, they're, yeah, they were going to, it is the same two, there are, there's only two, but that second one never got served, so that second one never became official until about two weeks ago. So now they're, now they've filed to put those together, conjoin them, or whatever the legal term is.
It's crazy to go on to, you know, to both, crazy, crazy in general.
I just, I just.
This kind of sounds like a cryptic conversation, but for folks at home, we, you know, we held a number of open forum meetings to solve the problem on Lake Street, on whether to pave it, not pave it, fix it, do whatever, because it's been a problem and a recurring expense. Decision was made, and we moved forward with that, and then we were served by a resident with an injunction to prevent us from doing any further work on the road. So we have informed all the residents that here we sit, that it's in court, it's in the hands of council, that one of their residents is claiming that the town does not own the road, that it's a private way. We disagree, we believe it is a town road, and quite frankly, if I were a resident, I'd hope it's a town road, because if it's, if it's not, and it's a private road, then the town has absolutely no responsibility for maintaining it, plowing it, or doing anything. It becomes the full responsibility of all the residents, which, quite frankly, we don't think is right. So we're in court, and we're in limbo, so we can't do any work on the road at this point in time. I leave anything out on that?
Nope. Very well said. Especially when now's the time to do work.
Yeah, exactly.
Missing a window again.
We'd have most of this done if it weren't for that now. And if it gets into the winter, it's going to be a real problem.
It's a tough road. I, I go down there for personal reasons once in a while, and I, I used to have a Jeep, I enjoyed going down there in my Jeep. I do not enjoy going down there in my sedan, yeah.
Try the motorcycle, see how that works.
Boom, pop.
Well, I just, I just hope, I don't know if council has any, I know they tried to expedite the process, but to me, the worst thing that could happen for those folks is for this to get into winter, and we're still in limbo. And we've got an injunction, we can't, what do we do? You know, first snowstorm comes?
Can we pause?
Fog hole's big enough to swallow a Volkswagen? I mean, we, what do we do?
You know, I mean, and we've talked about it a little bit, and I think, I think Bob, like all DPW directors, a little stubborn maybe, as we all are, but, you know, we talked about not doing a lick of work on that road. He's keeping it, you know, he's, he's going out there and doing a little bit so that it's, it's, you know, public safety standard, you know, so that the ambulance could get down there in a, in a relatively fashion, rapid manner if they needed to. So they are doing a little bit of work, you know, we're not trying to fight the, you know, we're not trying to go against the injunction, but we're trying to make it so that.
Well, you've got to, I mean, you, you have a lot of residents on that street.
Yeah.
And you, you have an obligation to be sure that if there's something, you know, a fire or police car needs to get, we've got to be able to get there, so.
Yeah, or a downed tree or something. We said that public safety would take precedent, and that's the right decision.
Yes, I agree.[1632.12]